Good afternoon, everyone. Before we get started, got a few minutes to go, but I wanted to let you know about the process today. We're here to take your opinion about the Rochester lateral gas project. But it's important for you guys to know that there's not, we don't have a presentation to give and it's not a question and answer session. It's just to get comments from you. If you do have questions about the project, we have commission staff in the back and the utility, the Webco in the corner here. So if you do have questions, ask your questions to them now and then when it's time for you to give a comment, well, you'll have your answers ready to tell us what you think about the information you received. So when you think about this, the process is you're going to be talking to the decision makers in the case when you give your comment, they'll read your comment. So you just want to give us the most information you can and give us your full opinion with all that information in mind. So, so if you have questions, get your questions answered first and then come up and give us your comments. So that's kind of the basic process. We're not going to start until six. And if you, yeah, that's utilities over there. Not going to start until six. We could take some more time in case we need to get people set up. Doesn't look like we have that many people here yet. So we'll figure it out from there. So Janelle, I'm going to unmute you. See you there. How are you?
We're fine.
Good, good. So you're the only person can, oh, there's someone else connected to Zoom. We're going to start taking comments around six and then you'll see how the process works, but you're, you're planning to make a comment?
No, I'm not.
Just going to listen in? Okay. So I'm going to do is I'm going to turn your screen off. Uh, because we're live streaming on YouTube. You probably don't want all of that on YouTube. Uh, so let me do that. And then if you do want to make a comment, we will get you back up and running. Okay?
Okay, fine.
All right. And we have someone connected to Zoom with Samsung is your screen name. So this is the Rochester lateral gas line project. Uh, the PSC is holding to take public comments. So just want to let you know where you're at. And if you do want to make a comment, I'll just need to get your name and you'll need to be unmuted with your camera on when it's your turn to make a comment. I don't know why I can't hear him. Is it in Bluetooth? I'm muted right now. I just heard you talking. So you're the Samsung connector?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Just wanted to check in with you. Uh, if you want to make a comment, we're just going to get your name. And when you're making the comment, your, your screen should be on, just so you know.
Okay. My name is Paul. Last name is Kempf. K E M as in Mary, P as in Paul, F as in Frank.
K E M P. Okay, Paul. Great. Got you. You got it? So we have a court reporter here that's going to transcribe what you say. We haven't started yet, but we'll get going soon. And there's people here in the hearing room, just you can't see it, but um, they're, the utility and commission staff are here, so they're, they're getting their questions answered right now. So we might have to actually take a bit of a break, make sure people are, uh, got their answers, uh, their questions answered before they comment. So it's only a few people here, so I don't think it's going to take too long.
Okay, I'm going to speak on behalf of my mother too, Diane Kempf, who's just south of me.
Okay, well, I'm, I'll take your comment. If you have it, what we'll do is, you know, it's your comment, um, and your opinion, it can also relate to your, your mom's property. Just want to give us the property, uh, you know, the address so we can, we'll know where you're at when which property you're talking about. So that's something else we can take from you, um, when you, when you're, uh, when, when you're making the comment.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Just want everyone's attention for just a second here. Uh, just going to talk over you. It's okay. I don't want to interrupt the good conversations going on here, but it is 6:00 PM, so just want to let you know. We're going to delay the start just until everyone gets situated. So take your seats and get your comments answered. Just want you to know that if you do want to comment, you've wanted to fill out one of these forms and they're on the table in the back. You want to comment, fill out a form. All right, now let's get started here. Uh, welcome everyone. Get your attention here. Um, I'm Michael Newmark. I'm the administrative law judge for the Public Service Commission. The Public Service Commission is the state agency that regulates utilities. And part of that is to approve or review and approve, um, projects that utilities propose. So they, projects like this one, the Rochester lateral project, uh, utilities can't, can't go ahead with construction until they get approval from our agency. So our agency, um, I'm one of the employees, also in the back, we have commission staff that worked on the case and part of our work is we, we look at the application, we review it and analyze it and present evidence to the commission uh, as to how, uh, the commission should decide issues related to the case. So that's part of the process. The other part is that we take public comment from people in the area of the project to get their opinion and see how they're impacted, uh, what they, how they view the project and, and what, what they think should be the decision ultimately. We reviewed, uh, we've had, last week, we had a process where we had parties to the case. Uh, parties to the case, uh, came together on Zoom and we had a hearing where we had the applicant, commission staff and interveners, uh, present evidence from experts, uh, who have addressed various issues, uh, that we need to decide when we review these, this case. Uh, and that, uh, that was live streamed. There's a recording on YouTube and also, um, transcript of that hearing will be coming out. That's part of the information the commissioners use to make a decision in the case. And the people who make the decision are the three commissioners that run our agency. They made an open meeting and they vote on all of these issues. And if the commission decides it can approve the project, it can approve it with modifications or it can deny the project. So that's kind of the three big options it has. Uh, and part of the modifications, if it does decide to build a product, to, to approve the project, it needs to tell Webco where it goes. It can pick the root options and also impose modifications or conditions on the approval. So, um, those are important points to know, um, when it comes to the process. So that, what we're doing here today is creating, is getting your comments. So that's going to be, we, if you speak your comment today, we'll put that in a transcript. We have a court reporter here who's going to transcribe what you say. So that's going to be in the transcript of this hearing, um, and the commissioners will read that transcript. And if you do want to speak today, you'll probably saw on the table in the back, there's a form you need to fill out and just give us your name. Um, some identification information here. And then if you want to speak, just check the box that you want to speak now. Yes. Want to speak now, then staff is going to bring your form up to me and I got a pile of those and I'll just going to read that, read off the names. And if you want to speak, you'll come up here, have a seat, I'm going to swear you in and then you give us your name and your comment. It's basically your opinion on what you think should be the outcome of this case. And like I mentioned before, um, if you do have questions about the application, we're not doing a presentation here. But we have the commission staff in the back and we have the utility kind of in the back row over here. Um, they can answer your questions, but because we're already started, you need to just take that conversation outside the room. Once you get your questions answered or you, you know, develop a better comment based on what the conversation you had, you can come up and give your, give us your comment, but we're just taking your opinion. So, um, that's important to know. So we, we can also take your comment in writing. If you don't feel like talking today, you can just fill out the form and write your comment on the back. We'd give you more pages if you need it. Uh, you can also put your comment, you can mail it to us. Uh, we got the address on this form for you, or you can fill, fill out your comment online. We have a online form and there's a link and a QR code to go there. Uh, goes right to the form for you. There's also a link at the top with info, basically the case, uh, the docket information, all the documents filed in case are available online using this link on the top. So, um, that's sort of the preliminary stuff, but things to consider, I think, what's really important, especially for landowners, is if you can give us any particular concern you have about your property, we want to know about it and that commissioners can use that in making their decision. So, um, you know, we heard a lot about drain tiles in the afternoon, in the afternoon session. So I'm expecting to hear some more about that, but, um, which is good, but we, you know, if you have a particular property where there's concerns, let us know and we can look into it. Um, that's part of what this process is. Um, also, you know, we have utility and staff here, so if you want to address those concerns with them, feel free. Um, and, uh, something you want to keep in mind is if you're really talking to those commissioners who are going to be looking at the case and reviewing it. Um, so when you're giving your, your comment, be sure to kind of address their, them and their decision and how they need to make that decision. So, um, going to apologize, uh, at, at the beginning, because I'm running the Zoom and the live stream on this computer at the same time. We're taking live comments, so I may get distracted by things chiming and beeping here. I don't mean to, to not pay attention to you if you're giving your comment especially, but just so you know, it's important, the most important thing is that the transcription is get your comment for the record and the commissioners read it. Uh, so, so that's the important thing. Make sure we can, she can hear you and she gets everything you say on, on the record. So as part of that, we can't have distractions and other noises in the room when someone's giving their comments. So please, take your conversations outside and no interruptions. Uh, it's important that everyone gets a chance to make their comment, give their opinion and, you know, we'll, we'll treat each other the same. So appreciate that. So we do have a couple of people on Zoom, so we're going to switch between people in the room and Zoom, go back and forth. Usually do like three to five people in the room and then go back, go into, go and switch to Zoom. So that's part of the process. Um, I think that's all we really need to cover. So if I bored you enough, we can get started with the comments. Um, so here's our list. Right now for people in the room, got about five or six people sun, uh, with appearance slips filled out. So again, if you're knocking, if you don't have appearance slip up here, you want to speak, get an appearance slip filled out. First one person we have is Jeff Bitzel, Bitezel, there we go. I'm probably going to mispronounce everyone's name equally, so try to be fair that way. Have a seat here. I'm going to swear you and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, give us your name.
Jeff Bitezel.
Okay, and you're pretty loud and clear, but you might want to just come a little bit closer. There we go. All right, go ahead with your comment.
So my comment is, there's lots of wildlife around and by me, it's wildlife sanctuary. I know the pipeline is going to run through the Eastman that we already have with the electrical poles. But, and we have a thousand year old old trees on our property that's close by, which I don't want harmed or anything. I hunt on our property. Um, duck hunt, beer hunt. I want wildlife to stick around. I don't want them disturbed. We also have lowlands by us marshes that, again, referencing to drain tile, if tiles hit, things are going to flood and a lot of the drain tile around here is clay because it was put in seventy, eight years ago. So there's no records or traces of it. So something to keep in mind too is if it gets hit, who's going to be on the hook for repairing that?
Thank you. Great. So now you see how it's done. That was a great comment. Thanks. Um, okay, next we have Scott Mason. And then Mary Mills will be after Scott. Now I think we're going to switch to Zoom, check, take some people from there. Right in, we're, we're affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, that's about the truth.
Absolutely.
All right, go ahead and give us your name and comment.
My name is Scott Mason. I live at the four twenty Sunnyside Drive, Kansasville, Wisconsin. My, I am here about my concerns on Route A, which is going down the middle of the street in, uh, into my area and a neighborhood's area. My concerns are, is number one is a safety concern. If anything should ever happen to that pipeline, we are in a blast zone where most likely it wouldn't fill us. My house is a hundred feet from where the pipeline is going to be. My well is at ninety feet from where the pipeline is going to be. Um, I posted a petition on the neighborhood against it going down Sunnyside Drive on the ERF website, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. I bet I made a few phone calls and they said they would possibly look at a new survey changing the route of that pipeline to the west, which is all farm fields and tree lines. When the canvasser first came out and knocked on our doors, I took them out on the street and I showed them, why would you put it right here next to all these families? When you can look to the west, nothing but farmland and tree lines. That's my concern. If you're going to go with Route A, um, that's not a very good option for anybody. Um, I have a visual here. I know it's not going to, just so you can understand.
Okay.
Okay, um, original line was going up Sunnyside. They took some precautions here to get it away from all these houses down here. And avoid all these houses here and here, they came up with a route C. I'm up here. There is plenty of houses and plenty of families do not want this pipeline going underneath our street next to our houses. I proposed an alternate um, pipeline into the, uh, next to the tree lines and the, and, and strips of corn that go there versus putting it next to the families. Um, they said they, uh, I do believe Colleen made a comment over the phone that they were looking to that in the spring because it was in a winter and they can't really do a survey. I have not heard nothing or seen nothing to per, in that respect on that alternative. Now this was submitted way last year and I've heard nothing.
What do you mean this? You mean this, this document, this, uh?
This map was submitted on ERF, November of last year.
With that petition you're talking?
With, with a petition of the neighbors that signed that are against it. Um, you know, there's concerns of, okay, it possibly being blown up um, through sabotage with the world the way it is now. You know, the North Stream pipeline had sabotage to it over, uh, other side of the world. And there's, if you go online, there's plenty instances where, yes, these pipelines have blown up. It is not a hundred percent. And if anybody ever says, yeah, it's a hundred percent safe, they are not God. Because that is not a hundred percent safe. So I'm proposing that, uh, we go with Route B, which is, has less residents on that route, less safety concerns, but if they do go with Route A, some modifications will have to be made to avoid the situation on the north end of Sunnyside Drive. Thank you.
I'm just curious if you could just describe for me, trying to find this petition and you, you are the person who put it together?
Yes. November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. I did not bring a copy with me.
Go off the record for a second. Um,
I mean, I just saw that on there yesterday, so.
November fifteen. And it was, did you file it or did you, did you send it in and?
I sent it in, Colleen, uh, put it on the ERF. I noticed Pete Beth put some under close to that time also.
Okay, well, I, I don't have it in front of me, but can you just describe what the petition was and how you got the? Yeah, let's get it on record. Sorry. So you did mention a petition that you filed on our ERF system on, on, uh, November or it was received November fifteenth, uh, twenty twenty-four. And can you just describe, uh, what you did to create that petition and who signed it?
Wasn't able to get all the neighbors, but, uh, the majority of the neighborhood on that route signed the petition. It was stated as, you know, we are against this being underneath the road when some places might not have an option, but there's an option in this case to move it to the west into the, uh, farmer, a strip of farmer's corn and along some tree lines. You know, are they more concerned with the safety of the tree line versus family?
Describe the petition. So who, can you remember?
That's.
Yeah, that was in the petition exactly. Yeah.
You know, and the safety aspects and everything and the property value aspects and the sellability of my house. If I ever decide to move, I would never buy a house net with a pipeline that close to a house. So that's going to limit my options as a resident of Wisconsin because of this project.
Okay, and then you went to each landowner and had them sign in front of you. So.
Yes, and the majority of the people did.
Okay, great. And then you said that there is a diagram you showed me that's attached to the filing, as far as you know. Okay. I just want to make sure I, I understood that.
Basically the same thing on. Basically the same thing on E R F. I did make a few revisions on this. I would like to be able to submit a copy right now to. I don't know who exactly is here.
Okay, yeah. So I can take, are these all copies? I can take a copy. I'll take a picture of that and put it into. The system as well.
And if there's We Energy Engineering here, I would like to submit him a copy.
I know that there's, yeah, the utility is here, so and.
And who would that be? Okay, and the Public Commission. Uh, authority and who would I give the map to?
So I can, I can take another copy if you want, but I will have it for the system. So everyone will be able to see that. Alright, sounds good. Great. Alright, yeah, so I'm gonna review. So if I can find it on Earth, I, I believe it's there somewhere. I'm just not seeing it right now.
You know, I'm not trying to stop the pipeline. I know, you know. Things need to move along, but this, uh. The route and the people and the residents and the family involved, this is a disgraceful route as far as I'm concerned.
I'll review that petition, see if I can put it into the record, uh, now that I have your verification of it. So thanks for that and.
And if you can't find it, um, you, can you contact me?
Uh, yeah, let's.
Or I can contact you and make sure that, uh. I should, my phone number, or I can contact you, make sure you did find it.
That and I'll.
Make sure.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks very much. Alright, so Mary Mills was, Mary Mills is next. So after Mary, we're gonna switch to Zoom. And I think, um, we have, uh. Paul Kempf would be first on Zoom. Alright, Mary, I'm gonna swear you in. You swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Alright, give us your name and comment, please.
My name is Mary Mills. I am a. Member of Mills Family Farm Owner. I am grateful for the opportunity to address you, the Public Service Commission. I did look you up. Half an hour ago, so I could have a bit more personal. Interaction. So Summer Strand Chairperson, Kristi Needle Commissioner, and Marcus Hocken Commissioner. I appreciate this opportunity and I believe if one does not speak now, then when is the time? I made an attempt to call. Your commission a few months ago. My name was taken. I was told I would have my call returned. It was not. At that point, I spoke to Nancy, who was your land representative. She was a different person than had come to our home. About a year earlier. The person who first came to our home did assure us we would be kept abreast of all changes. And interactions because we were one of the largest landowners that would be affected by this pipeline. We were not kept informed. As the changes were made. And we stated that to the people that then came to our home from We Energies. About a month ago. And sat at our kitchen table. So this all has been spoken to earlier. So I feel comfortable stating it now. So in review, we have five hundred and fifty acres Mills Family Farm. The pipeline goes through the middle of that property. We are, I am opposed to the pipeline. I do not like being pitted landowner against landowner. Nor do I like being told to be a squeaky wheel, which that term was used. When I was told how to address these issues, that is insulting. What do I have to do to gain your attention? I guess this is it. I have asked. I am not good at the document. Website. Other farmers have stated that concern also that they felt they. Were at a disadvantage because they did not have the technical abilities. I understand that. I gave it an attempt. We gave it an attempt also. I feel I have the same concerns as other farmers regardless of the route. Their concerns are every bit as valid of mine. I do believe we are on the preferred route, which has been stated is B. Once again, the five hundred contiguous acres through the middle. Once again, stating we have no written responsibility of action by We Energy. Engineers for fixing the broken tiles. You have countless records on this. We did speak with previous landowners that had previous work done by We Energies. When we stated that at our kitchen table, you asked for their names. I felt. I felt you said. You would do it differently this time. I'm not going to name the name of the man who made that comment. Someone here was in the room at that same time. You told those same farmers that you would make their land right. You told them the same things you are telling us now. I don't need to repeat that concern. I have the same concerns as those farmers did. And those farmers did not feel their land was put. Back to how it was before you did your project. I have a concern with eminent domain, which was written in that packet that I was given and expected to sign. I asked the representatives that were at my kitchen table. What much of it meant? I did not feel they had. An absolute interpretation of the papers that I was being asked to sign. I stated that I believe if there are any problems, their lawyers will know exactly. What are on the pieces of paper that you are asking me to sign? With eminent domain, we lose our ability to negotiate. For the price of our land. This is not. A my route versus your route issue. Who in this room has had land taken by eminent domain? By the state of Wisconsin, any entity, raise your hand. Hi. If you want to, cause I don't get a chance to say this again. I had land taken by eminent domain by the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. You can look it up on record. There's a procedure, but once that procedure isn't enacted. You have no recourse. And they don't have to talk to you again. Our money is sitting somewhere. In Racine County. And the only reason I know. That that land was taken by eminent domain was my accountant called me. And said, Mary, did you receive a check from the Wisconsin Department of Transportation? I said I did not. I do not believe this is a me versus you issue for any of us landowners here in the state of Wisconsin. I believe it is us, because if they can take land from eminent domain from me, they can take it from every one of you owners. Sitting in this room and anyone. Who was able to submit on the DocuSign. I have driven the combines on that very land that you will be taking. We Energies, you are my landlord. My signature is on checks. To you. You have entrusted my family with running your land. And I hope to continue to be worthy of that respect. Because we hold it dear. It has been a trusted relationship. To be able to work the land and bring in the harvest. I believe with the inability to use. The five hundred and fifty acres with a pipeline through the middle of it. Other offers for the price of this land will be negated. I have other offers for this land as we speak. The numbers are high. The paperwork is on my kitchen table. I spoke with a representative last night. His name is, I won't give you his name. Many people in this room have had the same letters and the same offers. And the same alternative energy uses. I'm aware of that. I do however feel that your offer. Of between nine thousand or fourteen thousand or whatever number you are going to offer, or we might come to an agreement on. With whatever landowners you are working with. Is not reflective of the value of the land. You are affecting my ability to sell this land. You are affecting my children's ability to sell this land. You are affecting my grandchildren's ability to. How or use this land as they might see fit. I value farming. I would like to see it continuing farming. I have no guarantees of that. But I do have a guarantee that if you put that pipeline through the middle of it. We will be affected for the rest of our lives. You have stated that you will put this pipeline, I believe it was four feet deep. Give or take, and that you will. You will check on that periodically, but there is no written guarantee of that either. Land and soil settles and land and soil changes. Over time, you will leave, you will do your best. I believe you will. I believe you have stated that we can work with you. And we can be there standing on the property as you dig through it. You stated that and I intend to be held to that, should it go through our land. My concern is. One, two, three, four, five, twenty years after it goes in, we have a liquid gas. Pipeline going through property one mile from this proposed site. This is relevant. My son and husband were doing tiling work on adjacent land. The pipe was exposed to air on the surface. We bought this land, knowing it was there. Those people were told the same thing. That it would be regulated and it would be followed up. The gas line came right out and addressed the problem. But it was exposed and it was a risk to my family. I do not have a guarantee. That you will be. Addressing the depth. Of the pipeline. One, two, three, four, twenty five years from now. And I do know land moves. And I do know our equipment is large. And I do know my children will be driving it. And I can't guarantee that nothing will ever happen. We will do our best, but that's a two-way street. So in the long term. Or family farm. This is our business. This is our income. I use We Energies' energy and I am grateful for it. I use Microsoft's energy. I looked it up before I came. I don't know that their concerns carry more weight than my own. And so to the commission of three. Um. Summer. Christian Marcus. I actually invite each of you to come to my farm and walk that land if you would like. I don't want any publication. But I would invite you to look and see, because it impacts me, my family. For the rest of our lives and generations. You have an incredible. Decision. Ahead of you. And my concerns are the same of every person's concern on all of those routes. I wish us well. And I wish you well in making your decision. I thank you for the time and the opportunity to speak. And I am opposed to this pipeline. Across our land.
Thank you. Yeah, we're gonna switch over to Zoom and we have. Uh, Paul Kempf. See you there. Yeah, just hang on. I'm gonna spotlight you for the, um, people on. The video. There we go, and see your. I think you may be. I think, I think your connection's pretty good. Okay, let me swear you in, raise your right hand. You swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Alright, great. So give us your name and your comment, please.
Uh, my name is Paul Kempf. And I'm at two seven five, two hundred and forty eighth Avenue. And then my mom's property is just to the south at six, six, five, two hundred and forty eighth Avenue. Can you s- see the? This map? You see that?
Not very well, no.
Alright, well, you probably got it. Um. It shows Bong right across the road from our property. So you guys are gonna be on the west side of seventy five already? When from the north, or are you gonna start by BB and go? Are you coming from the north heading south or are you going from BB heading north?
Um, yeah, I don't know if I can give you that. As we sit here right now, but you just, just give us your, your opinion here, because I don't really know.
It's twenty six hundred feet. There's no reason. To come on the east side of the road. You're gonna come down to the transmission lines. And then you're gonna bore under seventy five and then come on to private property. When there's nothing on Bong. Nothing but junk. We have a cyclone fence that's about thirteen hundred feet. And. With a gate. And the family relies on that security pretty heavy. There is a service panel that's poured into concrete. You're gonna have to pour concrete. And if you open trench that, it's gonna take years to settle. There is about forty, would you say forty? Thirty-five to forty oaks and hickories on our side. There's nothing but junk on the west side of the road. And, uh. You know, buckthorn box elder. So if you were to look at the map by the transmission lines, there's nineteen acre field that I rent from the D N R. And the D N R's got a program where they want farmers, well, they open it up to farmers because they can't maintain it all because of the. Junk they have on their property. So. If you look, if you were to look at the map, you could see, once you go south of them transmission lines, you're in nineteen acres of open farmland. And then from there. I don't have the number in front of me, but from the edge, south edge of that farm field. Um, where did I put that measurement? I wanna say it's probably fifteen hundred feet. That you would be. Running into anything to cut down. I don't see any cattails. There's no oaks. There's no hickories on that side. Um, I talked to Kenosha County Highway Department. Obviously, you guys buried it down BB a couple of years ago, so. Connecting that pipe at the intersection there of BB and seventy five would be no big deal for you guys. So. Um. We're totally opposed of you guys coming onto our property when there is nothing across the road, never will be. Um. According to Renee Hogan from We Energies, she said they have. Made exceptions to the direction of the pipe in the past and gone on the D N R property. And with transmission lines and gas pipes. So you're talking about twenty-six hundred feet total. From where you guys want to cross from the west to go east. And come on our side. If you just stay on the west side of seventy five and grow straight to BB would be the right thing to do and not. Take our property, wreck our property. We don't want your money. Just stay on the west side of the road and do the right thing. Okay, great. You know, I'd like to add, I would love for somebody to come out here and walk it with me. I seen the surveyors out there. They were surveying on the west side, on the Bong side. So I don't know if you guys are leaning that way, but. There is a lot of work for you guys to do to come on the east side of the road as far as. Well, number, you know, number one, that gate, we'd be without a gate for months and, um, had a family. well, you know, number one, that gate, we'd be without a gate for months and had a family member pass away. So there's, you know, members that rely on that security heavy. So, and the fact that you open a trench it, it's gonna take forever. You gotta pour concrete for that service panel for the gate. It's just, if I can meet somebody out there and walk it with them, that would be great.
Great. Well, thanks very much. Let's go off the record. Okay, just off the record, gentlemen in the front here, I'm sorry. If you guys need to talk, it's totally okay, but can you take it out of the room? Because court reporter is getting distracted by you guys whispering. So really appreciate it if you just have your conversation outside.
Yeah, but I could.
You did really good.
Are you all set? Yeah, if you go outside with them, yeah, take, take your question outside. That's great. All right. So Paul, I'm gonna mute you and turn off your screen. And we're gonna take, well, we got him right here, Will Myers. See you there. We'll take you next. Uh, that's, hang on, I'm just getting settled in here. Right, that's my, uh, Will and Myers, M E Y E R S. I can hear you. Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yep, perfect.
Great, great. So I'll swear you in, raise your right hand. Swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. So I got your name. Go ahead with your comment.
Yeah, so, um, I'm at my, my, my wife and I are at eight, are at eight four five zero Foley Road, Caledonia, Wisconsin. Um, we're actually currently building there right now. The gas line in its current route doesn't actually go on our property. It's section A seven. Pretty close to the Oak Creek plant, actually. Um, so we aren't necessarily worried about anything with eminent domain. I guess my concern is, and I certainly echo everything that I've read so far in the publicly viewable concerns, as well as what I've heard tonight, is the idea of gas leaks, you know? I think grand majority of us out there are on well water. So if there's a leak, you know, that really screws with our ability to have drinking water. We're actually, we're actually also putting in a geothermal system which relies on groundwater. So, you know, if there's a gas leak, that really messes us up. So I guess for me, and you can put me in contact with someone from We Energies, is just like if there is a gas leak and it is contaminated, who do we work through? You know, how are we compensated if we have to move? I mean, property out there, building is not cheap, I'll tell you that. So um, we intend to spend the rest of our lives there. So that would, of course, that a huge disadvantage as well. Um, I don't know if you're aware, but American Transmission Company is about to submit a project that kind of runs parallel with that gas line. Uh, my wife and I are planning to heavily contest that, so I don't know if that project is taking that into account as well. Let's see what else here. Uh, frankly, I just wanna understand that the construction process, because again, obviously you have the risk of gas leak further down the road, but just where the gas line, section A seven, is currently planned, it's decently close to where our home is going in. So what I would be concerned about is heavy machinery. Um, whether it's, that's the digger or trucks coming in hauling pipeline is potentially damaging the foundation of our home. Um, so again, I just wanna better understand how this build process is and you know, again, just with everything I've heard about the gas line conversion, or just the, the gas line installation, Oak Creek, you know, converting to gas. I mean, I'll just say this, I mean, I'll let this be on the record. I think that, I think the Public Service Commission should honestly just deny this project and tell We Energies, if they wanna better serve customers, they should convert the plant to nuclear. Thank you.
Right. Thanks. Thanks for coming. So I'm gonna mute you. Oh, got one more?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So again, I apologize for not being there in person, but um, can I get in contact with someone from We Energies to walk me through what the installation process is? Because again, like, gas leaks are one thing, but I just wanna, you know, understand like how much the ground is going to be disturbed. Is the risk of our home foundation being damaged with heavy machinery, you know, just understanding that process?
Okay, um, I don't have that information with me right now. What I'm gonna show you on the screen share though is our case coordinator. It's on our notice of hearing. So that's guy, email Alexandra Rank. If you contact her and then we can, you know, get you the contacts you need from the utility.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Got that? All right, great. And I apologize, I should have turned that screen share off before. So, all right, I'm gonna, so I'm gonna, yeah, there you go. All right, so we have looks like we, Pete Beth is on Zoom, but I think if that's the same Pete Beth that made a comment here today, uh, we're not gonna take a second comment from you. Just wanna double check, is that, is that you Pete that spoke today? Or is it somebody else using that screen name?
I had the reference number for you for Scott Mason's. It is
Okay, go ahead. Let's go off the record for that.
It is PSC reference number five two one 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 nine. So that's the reference number five two one 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 nine. That is because I was a part of, I was a part of that, uh, same petition for down this road, so against it.
Okay, good, good. I got that. But you're, you're the Pete that spoke in the afternoon, right?
Yes, I am.
Okay, all right. So we're gonna take one more person online. Uh, here is a phone call, uh, the phone number ending in eight seven seven. Person who's connected in the afternoon and didn't speak, but I'm just gonna give you one, one more chance here. If you wanna unmute, press star six. He's probably just listening in. Okay, that's fine. So we'll move on, uh, back to the room participants. Uh, we'll go back on the record. So I have Scott Brenton and then Matthew Thon. And that's, and that's all the slips I have left. So if you do wanna make a comment, please get your slip filled up. And commission staff will bring them up to me. You swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, sure.
All right. Name and comment?
Scott Brenton, fifty-five nineteen County Highway G. I don't think you should do it. I mean, they spent four, north of four billion dollars to put a coal-fired power plant in. I think you ought to run the plant. If they think they're gonna do it, if, I, I think you should use the north line, because when you come through Raymond on the north line, uh, you get east of Waukesha Road. Uh, most of that's already in a, in a utility corridor, because you're going down the power, the high tension power line. If you take the south route, you're going through a bunch of farmland right through the middle of the farms, and that's the first mile of the village, and that's the most, that's the land that's worth the most money. And you're gonna put a pipeline right through the middle of that. And it's substantially gonna affect the, the tax base in the village here. That, that's the problem with the south line. The other part of it is, is it pits neighbor against neighbor. You know, this guy doesn't want it on the south side of the road, and that guy doesn't want it on the north side of the road. And, you know, Jeff's worried about his trees, and this guy's worried about his gear. Just, I don't think you need to do it. Keep burning coal, let her go. I mean, that's all I got today.
All right, appreciate it. All right, Matthew Thon. Swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, give us your name and comment.
My name's Matt Tom. I'm also opposed to this for several reasons, much to other points stated here in the room this evening. Safety number one, it's coming very close to my house. If I have a family there someday, what's the guarantee that something bad isn't gonna happen? Um, property values, another one. Drainage, definitely a big one, been affected by drain tiles in the past. Everything's good now. When you start uprooting, who knows what's gonna happen? Where's the guarantee? Uh, much to the previous gentleman's point, the plant does run very efficiently on coal. What is the big push to push up to natural gas to this extent? There's more than enough coal in this country. What's the big secret? What, where's the agenda on this? I'm not following, so. That's all I got.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all the appearances I have. So no one else in the room wants to give us a comment. Um, there was a gentleman sitting here. So let's go off the record for a sec. Adam, can you just check in with them and see if they wanna make a comment, because don't want them to miss it. And in the meantime, it doesn't look like we have anyone new on Zoom, so let's, uh, just wait for this person here. No. No, I wasn't.
They know that everybody else is done, so I think they're coming.
Okay, all right, we'll just sit tight for a second here. It's better that they understand what they need before they make a comment, but. I'm just gonna crown them. All right, so let's have Tom Fallon come up to the room, to the witness chair here. Just have a seat here, sir. You've seen how it's done. I'm gonna swear you in. Raise your right hand. Swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, give us your name and your comment, please.
I'm this.
Okay, and speak up, maybe just scoot a little closer. That usually helps and then get into your mic, right to the mic.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Just wanted to go on record that the, if I understand this right, the proposed, I have a, a map here that is provided by me or for me. And
So you got, first of all, you have the appendix A attachment one overview map.
Right.
That's the first one, yeah. And the second one, let me just get it for here. Uh, second one is appendix A attachment ten preferred route. So go ahead.
Thanks. The preferred route, I believe, swings north of I'm on five mile road and which I believe is in this area on the map, on this.
The overview map.
Yeah.
Right, so you're pointing to the red line below the Village of Raymond indicator there.
Right.
Okay.
And it's really a lot of jogs in the uh, pipeline, not right angles, working its way up and back of numerous houses. And part of my farmland.
Okay.
Okay. And this, I totally reject.
Okay.
Okay, just so that's clear.
So that's route B, it's the one that you're pointing to at this point, right? Okay.
So if I do this, and we call it route B, all right?
Yeah. Got it. You just put in no route B, so that's, you guys. All right, and then
Your preferred route?
Preferred attachment ten, yeah, go ahead.
And it's a much straighter route. But I've, I haven't got any landmarks to use or roads. I can't read the, can you?
Hmm, I could try. That helps you. Uh, north gate? Oh, that's North Gate, I think.
Yeah, North Gate, maybe?
Maybe, yeah. Half-mile road?
Okay, so that's part of the problem.
Yeah, okay, I got it.
So we understand.
Yeah, yeah, perfect. I understand.
And now this route, I'm not in favor of either one, actually.
Okay, got it, yeah.
But this will, I believe, is the following some of the high tension towers.
Okay.
Okay, which if we're gonna do this, it would be the, there's easements on the uh, high tension towers already.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a precedent set that this is an established route. And I believe that's what this follows.
Okay, and right now you're just pointing to route A.
Route A.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. I mean, that's, um, well, that's our two evils, I think. And it's, it's a clean route. The land's already been disturbed for the towers. The, uh, I don't know what the setback is off of, away from the towers, if any. And but to my way of thinking, this is the best alternative route, proposed route.
Okay, route A.
Okay.
Okay. Yep, got it.
Okay. So I've got a couple of other questions. And I really haven't gotten the answer. Uh, one is when the, when the pipelines are installed alongs, alongside a road ditch, for instance, okay? How far? I believe it's, okay, where do they travel? Are they a hundred feet off the center of the road? Are they ninety? Are they two hundred feet? Plus the maintenance, uh, issue on it. Just to put the pipeline in, there's another, I believe they want a hundred feet on a good day. So can I get that information from anyone? I mean,
Not as we sit here right now. We have to, yeah, we need to get that, or, or it needs to be determined still. I'm not sure, so that's information.
Does that vary?
I'm, I believe it would, yeah. I mean, as far as I know, but I don't, I can't give you a definite answer.
All right, that's fair. Because otherwise, it can be up on my front lawn, right on my back door. I, I don't know. Okay. But this won't bother the proposed route is far enough away from me that it shouldn't bother me.
Okay, okay.
Okay. And I say that cautiously because I don't know just where, I, I don't know how far north this is.
Okay, I see.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay. This I definitely know.
Great, okay. And I'm just curious, can you just mark your property? You said it was along
It's gonna be tough.
Okay, well.
Well, that's about what I was doing out there.
Oh, okay, yeah. So you were talking with the utility, uh, before you made your comment, and it was, yeah, it was pretty intense, but that's good. Uh, it's good you're getting your answers, so.
I can't.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, but I believe it's in
But it's in that area. It's in where the, um, the, uh, route B uh, takes a ninety-degree turn to the, to the east uh, in that, in this general area.
This will be, yeah, takes a ninety and then shoots north.
Okay.
So it would, I believe that's that this is the five-mile road.
Okay.
Right here.
Okay, then don't mark it. It's fine. I just thought maybe if you knew.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to be sure for, it's our deal. And, uh, anyway, this this is in my mind, no way.
Yeah, route B, okay.
Okay?
Yep, yep.
All right, possibly proposed.
Okay.
Okay, but I need to know I've got farmland interest in interest in, uh, the village Caledonia also, but I guess we're looking at Raymond right now?
No, it's the whole project that we're dealing with. Yes, yes. Yeah.
Okay. I have another twenty-five acres, thirty acres or more, uh, running north and south and wherever I ninety-four is here, I believe up here. But I should be far enough out of it. It all depends if I could see the roads.
Mm-hmm.
So I think I'm okay. But unless I can get a really good map of it.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, again, uh, tile, tile issues, I've got, got the tile running out there probably ten fifteen along the road. For the, the trains probably, uh, hundred acres. Okay. Including neighbors, you know, they, you know, years ago, that's the way they did.
Right, right.
Okay. So no matter how they've done it, I haven't really been satisfied with, uh, uh, we'll fix the tile. Because I've dealt with the state of Wisconsin on that issue, when they put in the furniture bits. And we'll, we'll fix them. Well, they never see them when they're digging. So a year later, you got water, and now whose fault is it?
Right.
Okay, uh, my other thing I've tried, you know, we're talking about replacement costs on maintenance, on the maintenance land that's for tile, for, for installation of the top, of the pipeline. And for, as I, you remember seeing it, for maintenance on, on the pipeline. So that's included, I would believe, in an easement.
I would expect that to be, yeah.
Right, and the crop damage, if any, well, they're still gonna, they're still reserving that hundred feet of maintenance or more in width along the crop, uh, along the land which is being cropped. Uh, if there's corn in it or any kind of, uh, wheat, they're gonna have to knock it down to get into it, okay, if it's been planted. They would, uh, provide for any damage that's done to the existing crop that's there. Uh, what, what are we looking at for reimbursement on that? Will it cover the crop? I don't know.
Good question.
Uh, can't doubt it. But at the time you figure all the expenses and everything in, uh, we face some changes. Uh, plus it is in the middle of Raymond's proposed business park. Um, and on my side of it, okay. There, with the pipeline proposal here, uh, route B, they're going through the middle of that business park. And that's gonna affect the land value of that area. Uh, maybe much preferred, it wasn't ever there, I think. Because it's not, it's something somebody's gonna have to look about around there. And do they offer, what kind of easements do they offer on that then? Is there, uh, like a ninety-nine-year, uh, easement on? What are the terms of the easements? Um, again, not only would it be the business park, but home value also, especially if I got, uh, my gas line running in the middle of my lawn. East and west. Uh, that's just some of the things that I've thought about, and I've still got questions on. So as far as the whole project goes, or the amount of money they put into We Energies up in Oak Creek. And that was when they, one of the first meetings here, that, uh, I asked one of the engineers, is the problem being that there's too much pollution coming out of the stacks out there? And he said, oh, heck no. He said, it's, here's cleaner coming out of the stacks than it is going in. Well, okay, so pollution isn't an answer? Uh, I see nothing, I know they put new boilers and everything there. Um, if it's a problem with bringing coal to the, on the railroad tracks or something like that. Uh, if we can send a man to the moon, we can certainly keep a few kernels of, or pieces of coal from falling on the tracks. If somewhere metal they should, uh, should be able to build a coal tar and pull that truck. Uh, and drop it. And I have got a lot cheaper, I think, than pumping gas, natural gas all the way up here.
Can I keep those maps? Because we talked about them here, or you need them?
Nah, well.
It's okay, because I, I think we described them well enough, but if you want to keep them, that's fine, so. It's up to you.
You mail them too.
No. Well, we have topics of these. I just, because we wrote on them, I mean, we were talking, but that's okay.
Yeah, the real problem is, you know, clarity.
I, well, there's, and, and I was gonna say, so, I think you for your comment, I'm just gonna go off the record and just discuss a couple of things. So I know, actually, it's been on the record for this. So I do know that the, the utility did talk to you before your comments. I appreciate both sides getting together to discuss your problem and your, your, your questions. Uh, I know they offered to continue talking with you, so I would, I would hope that you follow up with that and you guys continue talking, get your questions answered. Um, but I just, I know that, I don't know if we can find a better map on our, on, on a, on our computer, uh, maps that we have, or is it, it just needs to zoom in on to, to look at the road name, so. Yeah, if you want to do that, I'll check that offline. That would be, or when, when we're done here, that'd be great. Okay, thanks. Thank you. Okay. So that's Tom's comment. Anyone else? Alright, well, that's it then. I appreciate everyone for showing up and speaking your mind, and appreciate everyone for listening and being respectful of everyone else's comment. Uh, at this point, uh, we're gonna end, close out here and, uh, adjourn the hearing. Uh, we'll continue the process with uh, putting the record together and presenting that to the commissioners. So thanks, everyone, uh, for your participation. Take care.